Can you hear us online?
Yes.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. So. Playing with my computer, so we have a notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which would be not be open to the public. And we would do that for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on today's agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. If we can now have roll call.
Harold Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton. That's right, I'm sorry. Ian Sharp.
Present.
And Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment. At that time, the agenda is heard, that item is heard on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Hearing or seeing nobody raise their hand, I will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Wednesday, May 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Move to approve.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. So now we're going into the public hearings section of the agenda and we're looking at PZ 250008, which is the Forest Resource Pilot Program. So, gonna hand it over to Tiffany.
Hi, it's me again, and I brought my fire department cohort, Neil. Um, so if there are additional questions for him, we're gonna run through this code amendment real quickly again. We spent so a good amount of time going through it this last time around. We are looking at modifying the resource protection standards to basically create a pilot program. Uh, and we are going to amend the standards to include prioritizing wildfire resilience as part of the resource protection overlay requirements. It creates this three-year limited-term pilot program. This will be for both developed and undeveloped properties. So those that have already either partially developed as part of the resource protection can come back in and still participate in this pilot program or completely undeveloped sites. We are fine working with the small and the large. Um, and there've been a few more, I think, informational things we can share as we continue to build this, what this program is going to look like. I think there's a little bit more exciting information to share on that regard. We will be updating that purpose statement. The items in red are what's being added, but essentially the big thing is, is that development should be designed to advance wildfire resiliency and to coexist with native habitats. And we want to basically integrate risk reduction measures into developments design as part of this. So, um, there was a key to doing this and it's because we're gonna heavily rely on the purpose and goal statements. I have the goal statements here. This is what they will look like, this is not how they look like now. But they basically will be reorganized, reprioritized. They will also include prioritizing wildfire resilience. But these are essentially very similar to the goals we have. Number two gets updated, but previously it said prohibit encroachments into floodplains. We clearly don't do that, so we want the code to say what we can and what we do do. We do actually limit encroachments into rural floodplains, uh, which is part of these resource protection standards. Here are, the overview of the pilot program is basically to create an alternative forest resource preservation methodology utilizing techno- technological innovations to inventory existing forest resources for both forest stewardship and preservation purposes. Essentially, we've been doing forest stewardship and preservation separate, and we wanna do them together. So we, as the planners, wanna have some oversight into the preservation because there are trees that might make better sense for preservation purposes and vice versa. So, um, you know, this will be a cohesive program between the fire department and planning, working this through. The magic behind this is this is creating no standard for forest resource protection. This is very scary for a lot of everyone. And this is scary for, I know, the Planning and Zoning Commission. What we can tell you is, is that we've built in some provisions, like this isn't about depoastation. We know that if we can't deliver a product at the end of the day that truly meets what the goals and purpose statements are of this code, that we're not likely to see the code amended in the future. We don't want to limit ourselves with a base level at this point because we don't know what it is. Right now, the way we do forest resource standards is based on a point value given to each tree based on its diameter at breast height. This works really great when you survey every tree on the site. We don't do that on large sites, we don't do that within subdivisions. We are just doing it based on area because that's what's cheapest and easier for the developers to do. So what's really exciting is that we now have control of the data. We have the data to provide to developers, we have the tools. They will not need to expend additional funds in order to work through this pilot program. Do you wanna share about data?
Hello, Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Neil Chapman, I don't believe I've spoken to you guys before. Wildland Fire Captain with the City Flagstaff Fire Department. Yeah, the, the, the data process of this, I think, was kind of the foundation of this idea where when we're looking at large forest landscapes, like the, the Four Forests Restoration Initiative or the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project, there started to become a much more common use of, of a technology called LiDAR, which is, you know, either from drones or ground-based equipment or, or set, or airplanes. You collect all this data that basically creates an image of the forest that we can, we can manipulate and model different scenarios with. And, uh, and as we started working more together with community development on a couple of things, I was like, well, never mind the forest, I need this in the neighborhood. Because we're seeing developers do things and it's not resulting in exactly what we wanna see. So when we updated our, our city forest management plan recently and I realized, you know what, our, our forest management plan outlines what we think is a healthy forest and what we wanna see for vegetation around structures. And that is in conflict with what we're seeing with the resource protection standards. So what's the best way to, to design this process? And I'll be honest, we, we weren't exactly sure. We knew if we used LiDAR data, we can basically model tree retention before we, we cut a single tree. And, uh, and if we work together through this process, then we can basically design the neighborhood and our tree retention at the same time, rather than just arbitrarily thinning first and then being stuck with whatever's left. Um, and so what we're gonna be able to do is using that LiDAR data, be able to, to work collaboratively in this parallel process to design the neighborhood, look at where the, the heritage trees are that we wanna preserve. Or if for some reason the right neighborhood design doesn't preserve all of those trees, we're gonna at least know that. And we'll be able to explain why those trees were decided that the right neighborhood is this, even though we know some of those bigger trees won't be retained. So rather than letting trees dictate our neighborhoods, we're gonna have a parallel process where we, where we decide these things together. And it'll be open and transparent. And so with that LiDAR data, we'll be able to provide that to the developers. The city has it from, was it 2023, I think, or 2019? Either way, it's pretty darn recent. Trees here don't grow that fast that we have to worry about. And so our city IT staff, we just had a meeting with them on kind of understanding how we take a LiDAR dataset and do what's called individual tree segmentation, where we can start to identify each individual tree and the height and the diameter and, and early in this process, we'll probably have to start doing some of this ourselves and then hand that to the developer, where it sounds like some of these engineering firms are already getting wind of kind of what we're envisioning and they're starting to develop these skills themselves. So we won't have to do all of that, that work in the, you know, eventually we envision just emailing them the dataset and they do all the, the LiDAR modeling and, and, uh, and then we'll have that data as well, so we can kind of compare what we think is right, what they're coming up with. And for a multi-hundred acre site, there's just no other way we envision being able to identify this optimal tree retention scenario without having that sort of ability to model this stuff. Was that, was that a long answer to a short question? Okay.
That's the long and sweet of the program, yeah.
Have you looked at other communities that have done this and their success at this?
I'm not aware of another community that's doing this in the neighborhood. Using it in the forest is very common. I mean, even, even in agriculture, there's people who are using this technology in, in cornfields and soybean fields. Commercial forestry, they measure their tree growth a lot of times with this sort of data. Um, and so how we, we use this in the forest is, is pretty well established. But going into a neighborhood and using some of these practices, um, I think we may be, be leading that way.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. So I, I'm curious, the, the LiDAR then has already been processed and you guys have an understanding of what is a tree here, a tree there, things like that already?
Yes.
So then you'll hand that off to the developer and they'll play with it, do whatever they want, and it'll be this negotiation back and forth? Good luck.
Well, I think that's the reality where we're using the same data. And, uh, and so if, if we're able to then bring up that map and show where the large trees are, where, where the densities are, and then they're presenting us something different, we'll be able to know. When, when a developer's coming at us with a 500-acre site or even larger sometimes, it's really hard to go to that site and identify some of these things without that kind of precision.
No, I, I think it's a brilliant idea, I, I hope it works.
We do too.
So, so along with that, though, we're, you know, what I mentioned last time is that we're trying to take the trees off the lot, lots and put them on the outskirts of the development, right? So, for the most part.
I would say we're, we're trying to find the right place to leave the right trees. And, uh, and, and instead of stacking a bunch of them in, in the corner of a property in a way that, you know, that tree density on a corner may not even meet our forest management plan guidelines of the city of what a natural ponderosa pine density should be. Although that's, that historic range of variability is pretty wide from, you know, very open to very dense. So this way, we can, we can better set up these parcels for some of the guidelines around the wooi code and tree retention. We can better set these parcels up for healthy trees, so they're not so packed in and dense that they're not gonna grow healthy. Um, and then also that combines with reducing wildfire risk to the site. So I think there's a way we can, we can completely align all of these objectives.
Thank you, does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I have one question. What happens, like, when you're laying out the sites and you get into the cuts and fills? Because, you know, with this higher density that the city wants, you're into, you know, pretty much a mass grading. And it used to be that you could cut within the drip line of a tree and it would be fine. And recently, I found out that that is not necessarily the case anymore. So who then evaluates that kind of a scenario?
So we don't, we don't actually allow mass grading. So the resource protection overlay includes provisions for slope retention as well as forest resources as well as floodplains. We start to preserve slopes at 17% and above, which is actually fairly low for most communities. But with that said, um, our other site planning design standards, they are looking for buildings that work with the terrain rather than trying to mass grade. So we have other provisions as well that sort of overlap in terms of how we work on a site. Because, uh, we're in a unique environment with our ponderosa pines and ponderosa pines having shallow root systems, we've actually always required a buffer around each one of those trees. So we would not allow a development or any level of any construction to encroach more than 20% onto any tree canopy. Knowing that going beyond 20%, um, we could severely damage those trees. And those trees wouldn't necessarily die within the first five years, they might die within the first 10 years. And it, but it's definitely a slow death and I've, I've seen it happen over time, um, when we get too close to trees. But the, the goal of this is not to get to a place where we're just allowing mass grading and mass deforestation of a site. That's not what we're looking at doing.
I guess maybe the term masquerading, because I'm more used to doing subdivision design. And to me, it's pretty heavily graded, balance your cut and fill. And here, we're doing such higher-density projects, there's a lot of cutting and filling. So that's why I was just, you know, it's kinda like everybody wants higher density more. But then again, you start looking at this and it sometimes can be conflicting.
Yeah, no, we definitely have been gifted the, uh, the goal of doing it all. And, um, we continue to show up on a daily basis and fight the good fight and try to do it all. There's just really, there's no perfect way to do it, um, is, you know, where we are. And even, I mean, we find ourselves constantly in conflict in terms of density, in terms of fire resiliency. There are a lot of, I mean, you know, if you lived on a five-acre lot and your house was in the middle of it and you cleared a, you know, 100-foot swath around you, you're in pretty great shape. Like, you're gonna make it. But unfortunately, can we build a city that way? Probably not. So we're trying to find the middle ground. We want the ability with this program to go out and experience the science ourself and to come back with what is reasonable in terms of density, what is reasonable in terms of wildfire. And I expect that there will be compromise on both sides at the end of the day. And I expect we're gonna learn a lot from our developers as well as from each other in the process of what we're trying to achieve. I do wanna talk about the fact that if somebody wants to participate in this process, they do have to, there is an agreement in place. We have a rough draft of this agreement set up, but basically, um, this agreement puts, puts the developer more at risk because it gives a lot of the control to staff. So if we can't get to that place of agreement, staff has the ability to terminate the program and the developer can go right back to the irregular way of handling the code. And they, they need to agree to that at the upfront. They need to agree that this isn't a deforestation, this isn't about allowing masquerading. This isn't, um, you know, we're gonna share our data with you, them. We're gonna try to make it so that people aren't going out and expending a huge amount of money for an experiment on our end as well. So, um, definitely wanna come up with a reasonable process, but we also wanna get with the developer early on. That is one of the things that we really, you know, I think we're gonna be open to having, exploring the process with anybody. But for the most part, we need to have a developer that's still willing to adjust what their development plan might look like in order to accommodate this, this process. So, um, they will have to get to that agreement. It will need to be signed by the developer and the planning director. That's kind of our baseline. And, you know, we've already started to talk to different groups. You know, we, we've got a commercial developer that might wanna come in, which would be great because we'd really like to show the difference between what we can achieve through residential development versus commercial. You know, high density versus even the lower-density subdivisions. You know, I'm trying to court an affordable housing project right now that, again, get them into the program. Hopefully, we can get there. So we're gonna do the best we can to get you to, to show the community the broadest range of projects and how we might be able to try to accommodate all of these things.
So, by approving this, this, none of these arrangements would come to PNC, it would all be between staff and the developers, is that correct?
Sure, there, you know, and as we discussed last time, I mean, we wanted to make this a very transparent process. And we have a lot of people who are very, resource protection is very near and dear to their heart. And we have no issue with bringing forward projects and showing you what it's looking like as we're going through the process. Like, hey, here's the development, you know, we'll, we'll try to get developers to show up as well because they have, they have obvious things to gain as well through this process. And so we'd like to be able to come back, um, check in, have a work session, show you what these projects are looking like. And we can show you even before, um, you know, final approvals are given. We can show you what it looks like before, um, you know, construction has started. So you can start to imagine what, and, and when you start, and I wish I had more to show you because when you start to see it, it's actually super cool.
So, the question was, though, it won't have to come to PNC for, for approval beforehand, you can show us what you're doing, but it doesn't have to come to PNC for approvals, is that correct?
Correct, I mean, resource protection plans currently are administrative, except when they're tied to a case that you would see like a conditional use permit or subdivision plot or rezoning case.
I, I think I would say, as soon as we have some of this stuff figured out, you're gonna hear from us because we're gonna wanna show you. And the, uh,
Because we think it's so cool.
And the, the other reality is this, this pilot project, once it starts rolling and we've got some of these things figured out, we may not be coming like project level to, but as soon as we have the ability to demonstrate some successes or some challenges and how we work through those, we'll be coming back to city council and planning and zoning to work through some of that stuff. And we've actually been working with a local forestry company and they're working on a couple of demonstrations for us because we basically took, uh, some ground-based LiDAR imagery um, and then a hypothetical neighborhood and had him start making some images for us to kind of show, this is what our, our existing kind of resource protection would, would create as far as tree structure. This is what this optimized scenario would look like if we could select each ones that we would think is appropriate to leave and look at some of these differences. And he's not quite done with the imagery yet, but, uh, but we've been working with somebody to basically have that, that vision so we can show people, like, this is what the current code creates and this is what we think is, is a more optimized scenario.
Thank you.
Rep. draft images we've seen so far, it's pretty dramatic when you see, like, this is what the code does today as opposed to this is what the code should do.
Yeah, it's, it's much fewer trees, but I don't think it's, it's very different as far as like shade or canopy. You know, some of these things that we're talking about, you know, it, it's just gonna be larger trees taking up space instead of stacking a bunch of little ones right next to them as well.
So, the findings for a zoning code amendment are that the, it is generally in conformance with the goals and policies of the general plan, which is our regional plan, that the amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare, and that the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions of the code. So I've listed all of the policies from the Flagstaff Regional Plan that talk about, um, resource protection, integrate available silence into policies governing the use and conservation of Flagstaff's natural resource. It's what we're trying to do. Assess vulnerabilities and risks of Flagstaff's natural resources, exactly what we're trying to do. New development should protect cultural and natural resources and establish wildlife corridors where appropriate. Again, it's exactly what we're trying to do. We just need to determine where that, where appropriate is. Protect sensitive environmental resources with appropriate land use and buffers. We were just talking about, um, you know, it, it's not, when you look at the forest management plan, it talks about sort of the distance you want or the clearance you want around a home and then the spreading out and allowing of trees around it. But now we're talking about, you know, when properties back up to open space or, uh, forest service lands, where, where are the, where are the entry points that fire might come into that property? And how might we best protect the fire from either entering the property? And then we can take that density internal, smoosh it together, no, I'm just kidding. But essentially, it's kind of what we were just talking about. There are lots of ways to look at this, that we need to go and explore how to make these provisions and, and then basically how to turn them into code as we move forward. And seeing what realistically works for developers as well as for these science-backed information that is coming in every day. You know, every day, I think he drops a new report from one fire or another. So the fires in Hawaii, um, you know, a lot of data is coming out of what the result of that was, what could have changed those conditions. You know, I'm expecting within, like, the final, this year, more and more data is gonna come out of what happened in LA. And we're gonna want to continue to evolve and grow this program to try to adjust as best as we can, um, knowing where we are.
So I do have another question. And so when we take this into account, does it also take into account what future flooding would be if there were a fire nearby when you're doing something like this?
I'm not a floodplain guy. I'm not a floodplain guy. Um, I, I, I don't know. That's a good question. Um, I, I would like
I mean, the issue is, is that we've definitely experienced flooding after fires have occurred. And one, because we just changed the overall watershed. We're all in a watershed. So while we may not be in a designated FEMA floodplain, we all become vulnerable depending upon when and where a fire hits. So the more wire, wildfire resilient we become, the better off we are within that watershed as a whole. So that's, I mean, do they all link together? Yes. Do the resource protection, um, standards try to get us to develop outside of floodplains? Yes. I mean, i- it should be ever increasing and growing in folks' minds that, you know, we are all vulnerable when there is a wildfire in our surrounds, right? I think you know it, I know it. Um, we've all watched it happen in our neighborhoods. And so, um, yes, it's meant to sort of integrate with that. But there's a big part of our watershed that we don't have control. Like there's things that happen in the watershed overall that we just don't have control over.
Thank you. Uh, Christine has a question?
I have one question that the flooding, um, it's been a while since I've filed a 404 permit, which is federal regulation on water. So would this program, um, help that process? Or we, is this integrated at all? To your question for drainage, that's what, you know, when you do a development, you typically have to, if there's a big swale, you've got to do a 404 permit.
So not specifically, no. I mean, we're talking about just changing what we're already doing. So we already require a certain amount of tree retention. We're just trying to figure out another base core way of keep, of managing tree retention. Um, so, uh, overall, the regional plan, goals and policies absolutely support where we're going. Um, you know, our goal is to integrate new science into the zoning code and to be cutting edge. Uh, I, I feel like the work that we're going to do here could also help other Northern Arizona communities, um, out there evaluate what their conditions are. Um, I went ahead and throw in some policies in regards to the tenure housing plan. And those do talk about evaluating and amending our resource protection overlay. I will tell you that there is a, a little bit of a risk that, you know, um, our affordable housing incentives might get tapped into a little bit because one of the incentives we often give is resource protection. Um, a, a, a reduction of resources having to be preserved. But we will take that into account as we're working with a site and knowing if somebody is doing an affordable housing project. Um, also, we do want to make sure we're achieving greater maximum densities. Um, and we've included that in the contract agreement and the requirements for the program that that is still a goal, that we're still trying to maintain, um, or achieve greater maximum densities as well. Um, in terms of the carbon neutrality plan, it does talk about, um, supporting the planning and zoning efforts that protect natural resources, um, as well as reducing urban encroachment into the forest. Um, it also talks about, um, carbon sequestration. I don't think we're going to run out of trees for carbon sequestration. I'm just saying. Uh, and then in terms of the being detrimental, our goal here is actually really risk reduction. Risk reduction in terms of homeowners in our community and hopefully in a positive way that also helps move the needle towards people's homeowners insurance. Uh, we know that we're not the perfect direct link, but we hope to be able to assist as, um, or at least not do harm in that area. Uh, and then lastly, that it is, uh, consistent with and uses, utilizes existing format. We have one other pilot program already currently existing in code that has a limited term, um, date with it. This matches it directly. Um, it is related to high occupancy housing and bus passes. Um, so that comes due in about another year. So we'll have to bring that code back, um, then. So staff is recommending approval. We're asking you to walk down this magical journey with us. That is a mystery to even us, but we will figure it out and we will come back with only good things in the future. So if you're willing to take this chance with us, we'd love it if you would recommend approval to the city council.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the thorough report. Are there any questions from commissioners?
I did have two more questions. Um, does this add work to the city staff? And then in the agreement that you come up with, with the developer, is there a timeline? Like, do you guys have to come up with an agreement with the thirty days or something like that? Just to make it predictable?
I, I would say this is going to add work for the fire department because we used to just get involved and sign off on some thinning and then hand off the, the project to somebody else. And, uh, I wasn't really happy with the way that was going, so I volunteered myself and our staff to, to better play a role in, in a partnership with community development. So it's going to, through this early process, it's going to take some of our time. It's good, IT staff is already committing some time on, to working with us on this LiDAR work. And so I think there's going to be a bit of a staff commitment to get this thing figured out. But, um, but once we have some, some more established lessons learned in place, we'll, we'll probably be setting up the developers to be in a much better way to, to own some more of that work instead of us having to do everything.
Commissioner Marr, did you have a question or a comment?
Uh, I, I did. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. And really it's just more of a, a comment. And, you know, from what I can assess is that there's, there's a lot of unknowns in this, in this, um, policy. And, um, given that it's a, a pilot program, I think this pilot program is really designed to address a lot of those unknowns. And I, I think that the only way that we're going to figure a lot of these things out is to go down this path. And so, you know, that said, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with, um, with taking this journey with staff.
I just wanted to show you this Google image. On the left there is the City of Flagstaff Observatory Mesa Natural Area, where we've done thinning and prescribed fire to, um, you know, science-based density. And then look on the right where the roofs are. Um, so we, we, we've got a little work to do.
Thank you. Are there any more que- questions or discussion from commissioners? Is there any discussion or questions from the general public? Nothing online? Okay. Is there a motion?
In accordance with the finding, uh, staff recommends to the city council for approval of the city code text amendment.
Oh, it would probably need to say planning and zoning recommends. So, so, yeah.
So in accordance with the finding, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to the city council for approval of the city code text amendment.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ian. Um, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys on this.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing some examples. Thanks. Now we'll move on to
Could I, excuse me, could I clarify real quick? Was that Ian that seconded? Thank you.
So now we'll move on to, um, PZ twenty-three zero zero one six one zero five on the mountain line maintenance and storage.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Ben Mahi. I'm a senior planner with the City of Flagstaff Planning and Development Services. For your cons- oh, I should probably open this larger. Sorry. How do I? Where's the little thing? This guy? Perfect, thank you. I do this a lot. Um, uh, for your consideration today, we have a conditional use permit request for Mountain Line Casper Maintenance Facility. The request was, uh, filed by Norris Design on behalf of Mountain Line for a passenger transportation facility, uh, at thirty-seven seventy-three North Casper Drive, as well as thirty-eight twenty-five, uh, North Casper Drive. It sits on two parcels. There was an existing conditional use permit that was granted in two thousand eight, uh, CUP oh eight dash zero eleven, uh, for the passenger transportation facility that's currently there. But the redevelopment of the site requires a modification of that conditional use permit. That's why you're, you're seeing me today. Uh, this new structure is, uh, or the proposal, uh, is for a new sixty-three thousand four hundred sixty-three square foot passenger transportation facility to replace the existing approximately twenty thousand square foot, uh, facility that, that's there. There's a couple of other structures, uh, that are staying. I'll show you on the, the map in a moment. This honestly is probably better than, than the future slides. So I might do it here. But, uh, to the north of this site is a single family subdivision, uh, in MR that's in this kind of this yellow, um, area, as well as a vacant parcel, uh, which is zoned HR. Uh, to the west is, uh, travel accommodations or a hotel. And to the south, vehicle repair garage. Uh, and then to the east is just a whole lot of road and, uh, railroad. It's about six hundred feet until you get to the next parcel, uh, which is, uh, light industrial. So I lied, I'm going to do it here. Um, so here's the, the new, uh, sixty-three thousand four hundred sixty-three square foot passenger transportation facility, uh, structure that's being proposed. It's proposed in two phases, so you'll see a phase line here. So, um, the existing structure will be demolished in two phases as well. Uh, I'm showing you the final condition here. Uh, that's, that's what the basis, the conditional use permit will be so that they don't have to come in for phase two, um, in a couple of years. Um, this, the site has existing structures on, on place. This is approximately twenty-five thousand, uh, bus storage facility. The applicant told me this is where buses go to sleep. Um, there's this, uh, existing building, uh, to the rear, which is the bus wash, a, an existing storage, uh, facility and, um, a maintenance building as well. Those are all to remain with the, with the development of the site. And in totality, there will be a, a collection of, of functions for this site, which include bus maintenance bays, bus parking, fueling facilities, storage space, offices, and meeting rooms. So I'm just going to quickly kind of go through, uh, the images of the, the development proposal so that you get an idea of what, what we're looking at here. This is the primaries, uh, or this is the, the structure that is being proposed at this time. Uh, there was a variance for, uh, the wall plane exceeding seventy-five feet without a, an articulation element, uh, to allow for this, uh, ramp that gets rooftop access for, uh, parking. That was granted in February fourth, uh, twenty twenty-five. The first floor, there's a, a bus maintenance, uh, I believe it's six bays on the, on the phase one side of this proposal and, uh, bus parking on the phase two side, as well as some office, uh, office and, and storage rooms. The second floor, there's some additional office and, and conference rooms, uh, as well as some accessory rooms, like bathrooms and such. And then the third floor is where you see the, the rooftop parking as well as some additional, uh, what I have labeled with no real confidence, employee support areas because there's a lounge, a wellness, which I assume is a, a gym of some sort, and, um, a place to store uniforms. Now, conditional use permits are required to meet, uh, three findings. I'm going to go through them one by one. Probably break it down even further. But, uh, finding one is that the conditional use permit or that the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. This site is within the HC zone, Highway Commercial. Uh, I have the intent section, uh, on the screen here. It's a bit long, but let's, um, bear with me. You're staying here until I'm done. So, uh, the Highway Commercial Zone applies to areas of the city appropriate for a full range of automobile oriented, uh, services. The development of commercial uses in addition to residential uses is encouraged in the HC zone, uh, to provide diversity in housing choices, provided that residential uses are located above or behind commercial buildings, uh, so that they are buffered from adjoining highway, uh, corridors. The provisions of this zone are also intended to provide for convenient controlled access and parking without increasing traffic burdens upon the adjacent, uh, streets and highways. This zone is designated primarily at the commercial corridors of the city with the intention of making the city more attractive as a tourist destination while providing needed commercial activity. Now, the applicant, uh, and staff has, has found that this finding has been met by the redevelopment of this site, removing one of the, uh, existing drive aisles so that there would be, or not drive aisles, driveways. So going from the three, uh, driveways that currently service the site to two, uh, which in, uh, provides for a more controlled access to and from the property as well as, uh, by providing, uh, a more attractive, uh, area for tourist destination. This, this proposal increases the amount of landscaping that's along the, uh, street buffer, providing for, uh, a more attractive street frontage that would serve the, uh, the public right away. Finding two, uh, that granting the conditional use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, uh, property damage or nuisance arising from noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration, or illumination. Um, this proposal, uh, would be, is designed to fit all of the bus maintenance needs within the building, thereby limiting how much, or mitigating how much, uh, potential nuisance would happen if those functions had to take place outside of the building and the existing conditions of, of the site. Uh, hazard to persons or property from possible explosion, contamination, fire, or flood. There are no hazards from, uh, possible explosion, contamination, fire, or flood anticipated with the proposed use. And the, the applicant has identified that there, uh, the buses are equipped with a full-time operational heat management system that automatically shuts down the bus when, uh, when it needs to cool down. That's not English, I'm sorry. Um, and then, uh, protocols are in place at the facility for, uh, possibilities of a battery fire. So employees would know how to, to handle such a situation. Then, uh, impact on surrounding areas arising from unusual volume or character of traffic. And, uh, the redevelopment of the site redirects traffic from customers and riders to the downtown connection center. I should have brought that up earlier, but the, this is kind of a part of a, a larger, uh, process for Mountain Line with the development of the downtown connection center. A lot of the, uh, passenger, uh, functions that are currently, uh, identified on this site would be relocated there. So really this will be employee-only facility. Uh, and that'll reduce the, the amount of, of traffic demand for, for the site as well. And finding three, the characteristics of the conditional use as proposed and as it may be conditioned are reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. The CUP shall be issued only when the can, planning commission finds that the applicant has considered inadequately addressed the following to ensure that the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding area. And then there's a, a list, I'm going to go kind of line by line. Uh, so the first is access traffic, pedestrian, uh, bicycle and vehicular circulation. Uh, this site or the proposal redesigns the access to the site to reduce potential conflicts with vehicles and pedestrians or cyclists by removing that central driveway that I, I, uh, talked about earlier. Uh, and reduces the traffic to the site by moving those customer, uh, functions over to the downtown connection center. Adequacy of site and open space provisions, uh, including resource protection standards where applicable. So the northern parcel is in the resource protection overlay. The southern parcel is not. The northern parcel, being in a commercial zone, is required to preserve 30% of forest resources. And their proposal would maintain 43% of forest resources. And then the civic space requirement, which is 5% of total or net lot area, is met by the existing foots easement that runs along the northern property boundary. The foots trail itself will be constructed with the future extension of the Linda Vista Drive and not as part of this project. Then noise, light, visual, and other pollutants. An outdoor lighting permit will be required to show conformance with code standards for the lighting zone that it's in, which is Lighting Zone Two. Proposed style and sighting of structures and their relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. As stated before, there was a variance that was granted on February 4th to allow the wall plane, but all other architectural design standards have been met. And the proposal will be moving, relocating the existing parking spaces that are towards the front of this property to the rooftop parking. So that'll also be bringing this site into greater conformity with building forward design standards. And then item 3E is landscaping and screening. As I mentioned earlier, there was an alternative landscaping scheme proposed by the applicant due to challenges with meeting all of the landscaping standards and the need for maneuverability of buses around this building. As you can see, there's a fair amount of drivable surface around this building based off of how they need to use the site. So to address that, they've moved more plantings that would typically be found in the building foundation towards other areas of the site, which include kind of close to a detention basin in the northern portion of the site, as well as increased plantings along the street buffer. Now, they don't have as many plantings as code would require, but where they've done that, they've increased the sizes of plantings to accommodate that. Item F is impact on public facilities. No impacts on public facilities are anticipated with this proposal. G signage and outdoor lighting. No additional signage is currently proposed at this time. All signage and outdoor lighting will comply with signage and outdoor lighting standards and will be reviewed on separate permits. Dedication and development of streets adjoining the property. No additional right-of-way dedications along Casper Drive or proposed off-site improvements along Casper Drive are limited to the proposed landscape enhancements that they're putting in the parkway. And then the dedication of Linda Vista Extension is not a part of this proposal and will be seen at a different time. Item I, impacts to resources. There are no known historical or prehistoric resources that would be impacted by this development. The northern parcel is within the RPO, but as we've already mentioned, they're required to meet 30% of forest resources, and they're preserving 43%. As far as citizen participation, the applicant notified nearby property owners within 825 feet of the subject's site, which is in exceedance of the 300 feet that are required, and held an in-person neighborhood meeting on January 26, 2025, where nine members of the public attended. No substantial concerns were raised at the first neighborhood meeting, and the applicant requested to waive the second, which was approved. And staff has received no comments from the public. So with that, I have the staff recommendation is, in accordance with the findings presented in this report, staff recommends that the request for the CUP be granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the requirements included in CUP number PZ-23-00161-05, and as follows, that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the CUP application. Now, we do have the applicants in the room and online with us, and they do have a presentation for you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Am I able to share screen now?
Yes, Rachel.
Okay. That was a pretty good presentation, so I won't be redundant. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Ben gave you a lot of information. So for today, we have a couple people in person and a couple people online, so I just want to do a quick introduction. I mean, between the four of us, we can definitely answer any questions that you have. So my name is Rachel Smith. I'm with Norris Design, and I'm a planner here. In person today, we have Ann Dunno with Mountain Line, and John Griffin, which is the architect, HDR, and then online, as well as Erin Hain as the landscape architect. So I just want to add one thing to Ben's presentation. He gave you guys some great information. As he mentioned, we went above and beyond in our notification requirements, reaching out to 825 feet of the surrounding area for our neighborhood meeting. But the one thing that I would really like to add into Ben's presentation is this image. As you know, an image can tell a million words. And the main reason why the CUP is being requested today is because Mountain Line, over the past 50 years, has grown significantly with technology, but also the length of their buses. And the current facilities on site do not give enough room and space for the existing bus line to properly maintain all the buses. They are being properly maintained, but in this photo, it's raining, and so the employees are having to work out in the rain. And so that is the significant reason that Mountain Line is looking to redevelop this site so that the site can fit their existing buses to keep them healthy and running for the community. So I think this is really the only thing I would add to Ben's presentation. He did a great job presenting all the information. But yes, between the four of us, if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
So, yes, I have a question. You know, I go by this building a lot, probably more as Highway 89 is under construction. It was a mess today. But to take the back way to the mall, one of the backways to the mall. Is this a two-story building right now?
The existing structure is one story.
One story, so this will increase the height of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my second question, or yeah, is the parking on top going to be covered parking?
The applicant here, they can answer directly.
And then I have a question. If that's no, have you made certain that snow removal equipment can go up and down that pathway to get to the top? For the record, and please state your name and address for the record as well.
Yes, thank you for those questions. My name's Ann Dunno. I'm the Capital Development Manager for Mountain Line. And I guess to your first question about, I guess, the parking, yes, it is a taller building, and HDR can help answer exactly the height. But really, the, yes, we've planned for snow, our facility team, we have ice melt planned. We worked really hard to look at the slopes of the parking garage access because not only, obviously, we have staff that are going to be operators, that there is no bus service running at, you know, 5:00 in the morning when they show up. So they will be driving to work to get their buses. So yes, we worked really hard to look at the snow melt, the drainage, and making sure that that has the capacity to handle that. We also, it is not planned to be covered, but we do plan, we don't have funding now, but we do plan to put solar ideally in the future. So in a way, they would sort of be covered on top.
John Griffin with HDR. Did that answer all the questions, or do you have?
Just to make sure that the snow removal equipment can get up and down that drive?
Yes, the ramp actually has a snow melt system to it, so there should not be a layer of ice to it. So at any given times, a vehicle can drive up, and then like little cats or bobcats can clean the top deck.
And then my third question, Ann, would be towards you. So I see a large training room. Is that right? And would that be available to other nonprofits in the community to rent? Do you know?
That, I would think, currently, we're actually planning to do that now with our training room facility. So a little bit of more backstory of, this is part of a broader master planning process for Mountain Line with our growth in the community. And our, you know, we were successful last fall with our passage of Prop 48 to allow us to grow service over time, which was amazing. The Phase Two is where the buses, which is not funded right now, just Phase One, the maintenance is funded. Phase Two would accommodate, and I'm going to not remember, 27 buses. Our intent was to maximize what we could do at this site long-term for Mountain Line. So we're planning to basically, I guess, park buses in the Phase Two. But the training room and those offices, we have operation dispatch. We have training staff that train operators. Yes, the facility would be available. For example, at our new DCC, we're planning to do a facility use permit for even the facilities there. We're planning to allow community to reserve if they want to use training at Caspar. One thing that wasn't mentioned, this will be a completely fenced-off site after this project. So again, it's just employees only. So we would, you know, be able to escort people on, and they could have an event or a meeting in one of these rooms.
So it would be available not just for transportation training, but for other activities?
Exactly. And that's allowed by our FTA sponsors.
There's just so few places that you can go anymore in this community to utilize space for meetings and other things, that that would be nice. So thank you for doing that. And then I think Commissioner Sharp has a question or comment. Okay, Commissioner Lucky?
Hi. So my comment, though, has to do with the future and Lockett because I know, we don't have anything on a map, but it just makes sense that at some point, Cedar is four lanes. It goes down to three in front of the Safeway on Lockett. Then it becomes two lanes. And it just doesn't make sense for that not to be four lanes all the way to the freeway. So you're sort of in the middle of that from it coming down. And then, I'm not sure, because I'm not a transportation planner, how it would get around you. But I'm just saying, as someone who lives here and is on the Planning Commission, it just doesn't make sense if we don't extend that at some point, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think that's their issue because they're so far down on Lockett that it's not, it's not really, mostly it's open to, mostly for locals, I think, use that road, not a lot of--
Are you speaking of Caspar Drive? That's our frontage road that goes into Lockett.
It turns into Lockett, but it's not Lockett, and it's not generally used by a lot of people. There's not a ton of traffic there. I don't know if you use it that often.
Though there are. There are future plans to connect Lockett to the north of this development.
Linda Vista.
Linda Vista, sorry.
Right.
So I think that's what you're talking about, that big east-west connection across town. But that is, that dedication and that improvement were not triggered by this proposed development. So we'll see as adjacent developments come in in the future at what point that starts to trigger those improvements.
And that's fine. I just think there has to be another connector at some point from Cedar. And if it's, you know, like you're saying, it goes further up, seems like it makes sense to me to go straight along, but however it goes.
Well, yeah, and so the Linda Vista, are they planning on doing that soon? Because I see equipment there, so I don't know how soon that's planned, but, okay. And then I had some other comment. And it'll come to me in a minute or after the meeting's over, and then I'll call you. Any other questions from commissioners? Any comments from the general public or questions? Thank you very much for both of your presentations. And if I could entertain a motion? So I can make the motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission-- Oh, this doesn't have to go to City Council. Approve PZ 23-00161-05. I can't talk. For approval with substantial conformance with the required findings and recommendations of the staff, and subject to the following condition, that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the CUP application. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So we've had a second. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for your presentations. I appreciate it. Good job. Lot of hard work went into that. All right. Do we have any miscellaneous items to and from commission members?
I just want to point out, our next scheduled meeting is June 11th, I believe, and that meeting will be canceled. So, yeah. Enjoy, hopefully, on a summer day with maybe some monsoon activity would be great.
Not on June 11th. You're really hopeful.
Putting out that positive.
It's like the hottest month of the year with no rain. But thank you for those positive thoughts because while we were looking at the bus and then working on the bus in the rain, I was thinking, everybody was probably singing hallelujah. With that, I am adjourning the meeting at 5:03 PM. Thank you.